All right, welcome. We appreciate everybody coming out this evening. Great to see, we got a good group out this evening and that's great to see. Always appreciate the input. If we can please call the roll.
Certainly, Mayor. Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Albritton.
Present.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Here.
Councilmember Kaczynski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. If you please join me in the pledge.
A pledge related to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, yeah, welcome again. Appreciate everybody coming out this evening. The first item on our agenda is public comment. I see the Sikhs are out here this evening. Thank you so much for coming out. We are approaching our 5K run and I'm not sure who the representative is that's going to come up and speak, but please, please come up.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, in 2018 youngsters from Sikh community in the town of Southwest Ranch initiated a tradition with the goal to promote social bonding across communities and raise money for the town scholarship fund. Thus began the annual 5K walk-run event, a fun-filled community activity. The event has been conducted every year since then. This could not have been done without the support of the town council and town management, which is greatly appreciated. This year, Mission Vida and Hardway Churches are actively participating in the event. We take this opportunity to thank them and others, including many local businesses, for supporting this event with their financial support and time. We are happy to announce that for this year's event, Alex Fernandez will be the grand marshal. He is the World Series champion for Marlins and a resident of the Southwest Ranches. Today, we are here to extend an invitation to each of you and all citizens of Southwest Ranches to join us for the fifth annual 5K walk-run event scheduled for April 1 at 7:00 AM. That's morning, early morning sunrise in Rolling Oak Parks. Those who love to walk, please register on the SYA website. It's been presented on many posters and it should be available if it is not, you don't have it. Those not wishing to walk, come to meet and greet your neighbors. And those who love food, come to taste my wife's world-famous mango lassi. Thank you very much. See you all on April 1 in Rolling Oak Parks.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question. If I'm a walker, what time should I show up for registration? Or do you have a pre-registration the day before or anything like that?
You could register on the day of, so like...
I've already registered.
Okay.
I'm just saying, when do you show up to get your number and all that stuff?
Seven o'clock should be good, seven.
What time does the race actually start?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty? Okay, so...
Yeah, seven fifteen.
What's the earliest that a participant can get there and sign in?
Like six, six thirty.
Six thirty.
Many of us will be there probably around six thirty.
I'm gonna wanna sign up at three thirty, please. I'm just asking for the record to let people know because I get phone...
But I think anyone who shows up probably six forty-five or so, they should be able...
I live in Rolling Oak, so once the cones start coming out, my phone starts ringing. So I just want to have some answers.
Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
All right. And I just want to say, and I appreciate this year, there's even more houses of worship getting involved, which is awesome, and we appreciate all the effort. Thank you so much, yeah.
Mayor, we have one registered for public comment, George Kalis.
You're number one, George. You're number one.
Thanks for that. Good evening, gentlemen. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay, 6721 Hancock Road, South Sunshine Ranches, Florida. I'm here to speak about Julio's presentation, which was excellent, and I feel like that should be given to every real estate broker agent who sells a piece of property right here in Southwest Ranches. The other thing I have to say is that Julio has nothing to do with what I'm about to say. He was second man at the time, and I'm sure that his hands were tied, and right now he's doing as much as he can for me. I think you've probably all guessed what I'm about to talk about, but nothing was brought up in that speech about agricultural exemption, okay? I think the first thing on Julio's speech was the health, safety, welfare, and maintaining property values. I don't get that, and I think you all know why, for anyone who doesn't know, it's because of the neighbor. And this all started even before, this is all on record, okay? And I'm probably reiterating everything that I've said, but nevertheless, it started with him dumping horse manure all over the place. Before he had an egg exemption, I complained to Julio, what's the other guy, the guy in front of you?
Robert.
Robert, I think.
Okay. And nothing was done. Well, I shouldn't say that because he did stop the manure from coming in. After the manure came the chemicals. He laid chemicals, he was killing off his grass, I suppose, and to this day, I really believe that my wife has a case of lung cancer from all those chemicals that he was laying down. But that's beside the point. He had brought in a thousand, over a thousand loads of mulch and cuttings. And he was allowed to do that, why? Because he had an egg exemption. He got the egg exemption, he was denied the egg exemption, but he did get it from one of our homeowners, if you will. She showed him the way to the back door, but let it go anyway. He did get the egg exemption. My shed, when I called Code Enforcement out to complain about the neighbor, the first thing they picked on was my shed. They said, they shut me up. They said, and that was not Julio. There again, they told me that I would have to move my shed, and that would be at a cost of over a thousand dollars to move it from where it is to a new location, only because I encroached on a property line. Now, having said that, the closest house in any direction to my shed is over a football field away. I think you've all seen my property, I think you, okay. Then came the berm. He was told to put in a berm. Code came out, not again, it wasn't Julio. Berm came out and they told me that he didn't need a berm because my driveway was high enough so that he wouldn't need a berm, okay? Not long ago, we got flooded, okay? And three of my crayfish wound up in Parker's, I think you all know where he, they wound up in Parker's yard. But when that happened, my neighbor was high and dry. So all that mulch that he put in, and as I said, a thousand truck, at least a thousand truckloads, time and time again. Dave and Chris Brownlow caught the dumping going on. It went as far as the magistrate. So when he came, he pleaded his case that the dump truck driver didn't know he was dumping. I don't know how he didn't know it because the place is locked and the owner has to open it so that he can dump, okay? Dave, I'm sure you remember that. Once again, the magistrate let him off the hook. Now, time and time, he's been before the magistrate maybe three, four times for this, and somehow, he keeps beating him. All this time, I realized that I was fighting City Hall, and you know how it's, what they say, don't fight City Hall. It was before any of you save one. Not long ago, I was cited because my bulk was a few feet into his property line in the swell area. So I got cited for that. Obviously, he's coming back and he's trying to get even with me, or whatever the case might be. Julio brought up overgrown plot, okay? Somebody ought to see the mess there. It's not overgrown, but it's one heck of a mess. And here again, property values, we spoke about property values. He's got temporary structures all over the place, over there, wooden ones, et cetera. Right now, as of this morning, he still has two freight cargo containers and a box truck, Julio's on it, okay? How he gets away, the only way he gets away with that is because within the law, it says that he can have that because he needs, I don't know how much ship, how much container space you need to maintain two acres of banana trees or whatever it is, but...
Hey, George, you're supposed to have three minutes, you've got about seven or eight. Can you just kinda...
Sum it up?
Yeah, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, right now, he's in the process of putting out garbage. He doesn't have a house, it shouldn't be picked up. Julio's on that as well. Okay, I'll break it right there because I have more to say, but that's fine. You got the picture.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, George. Appreciate it. There's no more public comment. Thank you. Great, thank you, Richard. All right, we have any board reports this evening? Seeing none. Councilmember comments?
I'll go.
All right, awesome. Thank you, Gary.
Surprise. Just thank everybody for coming. How many we got out in TV land? Six, great. Good evening, everybody. Just a few general announcements, and then I'm gonna make some remarks about our time in Tallahassee.
Good.
For just summarize. Coming up, we have the DMV Flowmobile on the 26th of April. If you need to use their services, please contact Deborah, she'll arrange for an appointment. It's a great service, saves you from running downtown. On the 29th of April, we have Hazmat at the Barn, which includes shredding and drug prescription drop-off and electronics and fluorescent light bulbs and paint and whatever that you may not want, oral tires, things of that nature. The Broward County Property Appraiser is gonna be here Tuesday on the 4th of April from 10 to 12. If you have any property appraiser questions or home state exemption, et cetera. We all know about the 5K. It's coming up real fast here. It's on the 1st. Try to get there by 7:00 AM earlier if you can get better. There's probably about 200 to 300 runners who will all be signing in. I know last year, they had a day before kind of thing, and I did that, that's why I was asking the question. So I don't, the way I asked it earlier. On the 8th, the day before Easter, we have the annual Rolling Oaks Egg Hunt. It is open for all children in the town. Starts at 11:00 AM. They need to bring an empty basket because they're gonna leave with a full one. It's all in various age groups, and we've got some golden eggs out there that have got some big chocolate bunnies. Mr. Jim's in charge of the golden egg program, so, and Mr. Bob's in charge of the taking pictures with Mr. Bunny. We have a life-size bunny, well, bigger than life-size, let me rephrase that. We have a big bunny.
About six feet tall.
And he's got big ears and on, anyway, I won't get into that. Our council meetings are next month, are the 13th and the 27th. We hope to see you there. Just some, let you know, Green Meadow Sanctuary, Meadow Sanctuary was awarded a $600,000 grant with a $150,000 town match for drainage, for a drainage canal on wetlands that was provided by, it was an earmark provided by the federal government through Debbie Wasserman Schultz. And up in Tallahassee, we met with, we went up on, Jim and I went up, Councilmember Vice Mayor Albritton, excuse me, and I went up on Sunday and we came back on Tuesday, and we brought David back with us because we didn't want to leave him behind. And we had, we met with several senators and representatives. We were putting in for $1.2 million of infrastructure projects, which included the Southwest 69th Street Drainage. It's in country estates, 57th Court Drainage Improvement, and it's also in country estates off of 185th. The Sunrise Drainage Improvements, and La Ray and Holaty, and then the Safety Guard Rails on 127th Avenue, which is Appaloosa Trail, running from Sterling to Sheridan. And we had, we had to explain that this was different than the one that we did the previous year, which was turned down, which was South Hancock. We had to explain that that was a different one. They look, they told us that they had $180,000, $180 million for water projects for the entire state. So they felt fairly confident on the water improvements, the guardrails was a question mark. So just making everybody aware of that one. Representative Gottlieb had mentioned that, that he's the one sponsoring, sponsoring that one. So, but we met with Democratic leader Senator Lauren Book, Representative Mike Gottlieb, Representative Robin Bartman, and our lobbyists arranged for a meeting with Alex Vargo, who is direct, Special Assistant to the Speaker of the House. And we talked to him about our flooding situation and various, various things, and they were taking copious notes. I mean, they were all very engaged, which was kind of, kind of nice, as opposed to just sitting back and, you know, listening to us talk. And then the grand finale, at the end, we got to meet with the Commissioner of Agriculture, Wilton Simpson, for about 12, 15 minutes. And it was quite a, quite a likable individual. Farmer up in northern Florida, he's a chicken farmer, as a matter of fact, and cattle. And he enlightened us on a few things, and I realize Keith's involved in it right now with, with their office. They're doing some reinterpretations of the tourism law, of the agritourism law and stuff like that. And Keith is heavily, heavily involved in that. So that's, and then we flew home on a very long flight that shouldn't have been very long. And, but we think we, we think we nailed it with the appropriations, which was great, and I'm gonna let it go with that. We're hoping that everything gets passed, including the guardrails. So I just wanted to give you an FYI, but we met with as many people as we could arrange at that time, and of course, as we were leaving, all of Broward County was coming in, so it was quite a zoo at that point. So, but we got, we got to see everybody first before, you know, so the strategy worked out of getting up there earlier. And just let me, let me review my notes here for just a second. Oh, yeah, and the, just on a sadder note, the fireworks bill that we've been trying to work on is, everybody has said it's a no-go for the three days. Now, we mentioned that we were working on the 362 to a couple people, and they said that's a great idea, get that going, get that, gotta get all the kinks out of that, and then try again next year. So we're gonna, you know, that's, you know, the best advice they could give us at that point. So we worked on, we're gonna be working on the three, what we call the 362 bill, you know, for fireworks to give as our local, local ordinance. And that's all I got at this moment.
Good, great.
We just have a quick correction to one of the statements. It was...
Okay, the DMV are not coming in April. They're coming in May?
Uh, we will be following up with them.
Okay, so...
...in Broward, Tallahassee.
Oh, okay. All right, so cancel the DMV part, ladies and gentlemen, I apologize.
Hot off the press. All right, thank you. Thank you, Gary, appreciate the update.
Where was the hook when you...
Like, David?
Sure, thank you. Thank everybody for coming out. We got a larger-than-normal audience, thank you, everybody. Yeah, as what Gary took a lot of comments I was gonna take about Tallahassee, he summed it up pretty solid. I was actually super impressed with the meeting with Agricultural Commissioner Simpson. He gave a very thorough explanation of things with his office and his concerns with agritourism, and gave us a great explanation of it. Maybe a week or so ago, there was a news story in NBC 6 about mail thefts in Sunshine Ranches. And I'm not gonna go into too much detail because it's, it's an issue under investigation, but I wanna assure the audience and our residents that the town and law enforcement are on this, and we're gonna catch those bastards. We're gonna get them. And then finally, 1997, I moved to Sunshine Ranches for law school. I bought the home where I was renting in 2007. Around 2015 or so, I paid off a large chunk of my student loans and began getting active in the town. In 2016, I ran for town council and did not succeed. I didn't, and based upon one email that was sent to me, I did not disappear. I stuck around. And thank you, thank you. And I stuck around, and 2000, or 2020, I ran again. And I was successful in that. My, my big concerns for the town is my whole campaign slogan, and I still live by that, is keeping us rural. And what that means is we're protecting our horses, protecting our goats, protecting our sheep, because these are the, this is what Southwest Ranches is about. I also believe in protecting our domestic animals, keeping our dogs and our cats safe as well. Other issues deal with public safety, and like I said, dealing with the mail thefts, it's a big concern for me. And just kind of enforcing and making good regulations to keep us rural. So I'm gonna make an announcement tonight that I am seeking reelection next year, and I would really appreciate everybody's support. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, David. That's very good.
Go, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to touch bases a little bit about what David, what Gary was talking about, we have a lobbyist group in Tallahassee called Southern Group. Nelson Diaz is our lobbyist, and I'm gonna tell you what, I gotta give him 110% credit for getting us into see the lobbyist, to see the legislative people. I will tell you this, though, we were there on Monday, and all of our representatives, Ms. Brooks, Mr. Gottlieb, Robin Bartman, and all, they looked like they had, they were wore out, they were tired. They've been up there already, fighting and carrying on, they were beat up already, and it was just Monday morning. I really felt sorry for them. I feel sorry for them going into those chambers, knowing that nobody's listening anyhow. You waste your time talking, and it just feels, you know, but they are up there fighting their butt off to get us these appropriations that we're looking for. If these go through, this will be great. There'll be four projects in town that we'll be able to do. If we don't get them, then we might be able to do one with the money that we have. But I was really happy by going up there early, and like Gary said, Tuesday, the whole crowd come in. I mean, the hotel was packed, the lobby was packed, and we were sneaking out as they were sneaking in, so, I mean, it was good. Plane ride home was empty, so that was nice. Plane ride going up was crowded, we almost had to sit on each other's lap, but other than that, it wasn't bad. I attended a meeting with the Broward, I guess the Broward Advisory Board for Transportation last week, week and a half ago. They're doing a lot here in the, in the county to get public transportation. It really wouldn't affect us as much out here, but all over the rest of the town where there's a lot of high-rise buildings, a lot of low-income housing, they're working real hard to get the bus systems, the train systems, all that. They're still looking for bicycle pathways. A lot of the people are in favor of them, a lot of people aren't. I don't know how you feel about that, but the bicycles along the major highways and so is a concern for a lot of the people. So, you know, that's something they're looking at. I have not received, and I'm a little disappointed, any new request for the trailers, for the speed trailers. You know, we have the trailers out there, they light up blue and red and flash when you're going over the speed limit. There may be one on the list currently that hasn't gotten the trailer in front of their place, but I would have thought that, to be honest, that I'd have 20 or 30 people waiting on the waiting list to get it. I haven't gotten any calls. So if you're interested in having a speed trailer put in front of your house or down the street from you, give me an email, give me a call, and let me know, and I'll turn it into Tom here. He moves them around about every two weeks, correct, Tom? About every two weeks? And, you know, if, if he doesn't get any requests, then we just randomly pick a place. But I'd much rather you request that it be in front of your place instead of randomly putting them somewhere. And I'll finish up with saying that the past two and a half years for me has been a learning curve. I came into politics two and a half years ago. I was fortunate enough to know Fred Fisickelli, our past District 3 representative, and turns out he was a real long, lifelong friend of my dad and my uncle's. When he passed away, they asked after that, when the elections come up, if I'd run the town, a couple people in town, and I said yes. And like I said, this two and a half years has been wonderful for me, and I will tell you that I will stay on. If you'd elect me again in 2014, I'll stay on. So I will be running, you'll see my little green and white signs, you'll see me out on the street corners waving to everybody, and you'll see me riding around in my golf cart speaking to body. So with that, I thank you.
Great, thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Yeah, Bob?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't go to Tallahassee, so I don't have all those great things to talk about, but I'm hoping to hear more. Something I did want to bring up that I've been talking about since the first time I got elected, Broward County comes out here every other year or so and gives us this pitch on, on how they want to get into the garbage business. And the reason it's worried me is they've done this before and they've failed. When Broward County was responsible for all the garbage pickup, our service was lousy. Goes back a long time ago, it's before we were a town, but it was lousy. Now, when Broward County came here last time, they said, oh, this thing is gonna pay for itself due to recycling. They're gonna really have the emphasis on recycling versus throwing things on, on the trash heap. Now, all that sounds good, but now, there've been a couple of articles. They want to either put it out on 27, next to the existing dump, which means to me, tons of traffic is gonna be added to Griffin Road, because those garbage trucks, they take the shortest distance between two points. So if they're anywhere in northeast Broward County, they're coming down the Sawgrass to I-75, getting off at Griffin Road, and they're gonna go west. I heard some rumors they're gonna put the entrance on 27, not on Sheridan Street, in which case, we really ought to be fighting for the road widening that we're talking about, because that's gonna add hundreds of trips per day. Yeah? Certainly. Sorry. More comfortable back here. Now, well, they're, they're either gonna put it over on 27, or they're gonna put it up in Deerfield. They've got property up there that belongs to the now-defunct garbage, I don't even know what they call it anymore. They're looking to do it again, but they want all the cities to get involved and cover the billion dollars that it'll cost to start this up. Here's what happened last time. When their contracts ended with Waste Management, Waste Management ended up owning the incinerator, the wheel operator plant over there by Orange Drive and 441. They don't know how to do garbage, so I would never vote for this council, I shouldn't say never, unless they came at us with something compelling like free. I don't think I would vote for any changes in the way we do our garbage. And if you hear about it, let, let your neighbors know that what Broward County is doing, they failed at before. I don't think they're gonna be able to do it any better this time, to be honest with you. I don't, I see us going through the same process as we did 25 years ago. So that's all I have, Mayor, on a good note.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Bob. All right, just a few items I wanted to touch on. I did want to just do a follow-up on the presentation that Julio did last meeting with Code. Excellent presentation. Excellent presentation, and, and I just want to say that, um, that's a tough job, and he, uh, he takes a lot of abuse for that job, um, and, um, much of it, nearly all of it, is undeserved. He does an excellent job. He has an excellent staff, and, um, and I just wanted to publicly say, Julio, we appreciate the work you do. We appreciate how professional you are, and we appreciate how you are focused on compliance and not on penalties. You do a great job. Thank you. Um, uh, David mentioned that there was, uh, we are having some issues with mailbox thefts, and, um, I know Davy P.D. is, uh, working on that. They have been very successful in, as, when it was in other areas of the town, and I have no doubt they will be successful in this area, too, so, but they're, they're on it and they're working on it. Um, I would encourage a couple of things that we can do as residents to help cut down our risk and to, uh, make our community less desirable for those folks to come by and try and steal our mail. One is, um, just try and get into a habit that when you get, get, you know, before the sun goes down, to take a walk out to the mailbox and get your mail, so that it's not out there overnight. I think that'll help a lot. Usually, these individuals come out in the middle of the night. They're not, they're not, you're normally coming out in broad daylight, so please do that. And then the second thing is, um, we have, uh, if you're mailing a check, anything that is significant like that, um, we've got a mailbox right in front. Thank you, Gary, for your work on that. And, um, but we've got one there. There's post offices, um, both a little north and south of us as well, where you can drop off your mail if you're headed that direction. Um, don't, don't, don't put checks and things like that, um, financial documents in your mailbox. And so by doing that, um, we can, we can really cut down on, on the theft. Uh, the other thing I would say is if you haven't signed up for the, the post office has this, uh, service where they send you an email. I'm signed up for it around eight AM every morning. I get an email that tells me all the items that are going to be in my mailbox that day. And so if there's something missing, I'm able to know it right away. And so I would encourage you to sign up for that. Just go to the USPS, uh, website, and it's right there, easy to sign up for. And then the last thing I wanted to touch on, we had an issue, or an issue came up in the Country Estates, uh, HOA meeting, um, and a lot, a lot of times, I give Jim Lasky a hard time about a lot of stuff, but, uh, but I wanted to call this out because this was, I, I think this is an important item that, uh, that he did a good job of catching, and, and we're looking into it, the, you know, where they're putting the, the lines underground, and, um, and I'm concerned, he, Jim brought it up, and then we, we went back and we checked on it, and I am concerned that the, the electrical boxes are not being placed high enough in that area of town. So we're looking into that. I know, uh, Andy's been great following up with FPNL. We don't have the answer on that yet, but I did want to do a call-out, um, and appreciate, um, the feedback on that. We, we as a council go to, um, you know, pretty much all the HOA and all the board meetings and, and all the, all those items, because we want to hear the feedback, and, and a lot of times, maybe it looks like we're just there listening, but we are listening and we're hearing, and things come up that we want to take action on. And, uh, so we always appreciate the feedback. It's, it's super helpful, and that's why we go. And I'll finish up with, um, David, Jim, that's great news. Uh, look forward to, uh, you know, that, uh, you guys continuing on and doing a great job. Yep. All right. And, uh, with that, we will go to legal comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just one quick comment. Um, happy to report that, uh, we did succeed on the, uh, case that the city of Pembroke Pines filed against Southwest Ranches regarding the public records law, uh, that they alleged that we had a violation due to, uh, the clerk not providing records in a timely fashion. So we did prevail in that, and now we're just awaiting, uh, the judge's ruling as to fees and costs. Great.
Good. Great news.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything this evening.
Wow. Wow. All right.
First time I had less than Richard.
Yeah. We are rocking and rolling. All right. Item number eight, please, an ordinance on second reading.
This is an ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending Chapter Three of the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code of ordinances pertaining to dangerous dogs, providing for penalties, providing for inclusion in the town's code, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Um, if it's, uh, is there any comment? Let's start with the council.
Uh, I have, uh, some comments that I would like to make. I'd, I'd like to read some, uh, items into the record, but first, a little preamble to what, uh, I'm about to talk about. Um, last week, we had a vicious dog attack that, uh, killed a, uh, resident's dog. There was, uh, several, uh, pit bulls that, uh, did, uh, came onto his property and, uh, killed his, killed his dog, and, uh, I'd like to read to you some, uh, into the record some of the, uh, correspondence we got from family members and from Mr. Morris himself.
Yes, please. Thank you, Gary.
All right. Um, this was dated today. It's, uh, Dear, Dear Mr. Burns, I am the daughter of, uh, Jim Morris, and by the way, uh, for those of you who don't know, Mr. Morris is sitting right here in, uh, in the, in the center aisle. Um, I am the daughter of Jim Morris, the man whose dog was torn apart and killed by a neighbor's pit bull. Happy, that's the name of the dog. Our precious dog was on our own property when this horrific attack took place. We are requesting that action be taken against the owner of these vicious animals. My father is ninety-one years old and cannot express the grief that he is suffering due to the Southwest Ranches owners neglect. Also, this letter serves as a notice that you are already, or you are hereby alerted to this ongoing danger in Southwest Ranches residents and their pets, and you should have ample opportunity to take action. Please make sure Southwest Ranches is safe again and take immediate action. And, uh, I've received a picture of the dog, and the dog looks very, very cute. The next letter I've got is from another daughter of Mr. Morris, and says, Dear Mr. Burns, thank you for the opportunity to contact you. I live in North Carolina, and I am unable to attend this meeting, but will be watching online. My mom and dad, James and Martha Morris, bought their forever home on Southwest Fifty-Fifth Street in Rolling Oaks in nineteen seventy-eight. It's just over two acres, and in the years since, their children and grandchildren have enjoyed many happy times there. The family's had horses, goats, dogs, cats, and cows over these many years. Outdoors, the biggest threat ever at all was, in those decades, was fire ants. My mom passed away several years ago, and my father has a live-in helper. A few weeks ago, she placed my dad's ten-year-old mixed-breed dog named Happy on a long chain outside the back door so that he could do his business. This has been going, an ongoing routine for years. He's never outside for more than ten minutes on the chain, and then he's ready to return inside. I cannot describe to you the absolute horror which suddenly took place. Two strange pit bulls appeared in my father's property, attacked, and then mauled the sweet hapless, helpless dog who had been a source of joy for my father for ten years. There is nothing that could be done. It happened so fast, it was an absolute nightmare. Happy died on the, at the animal hospital and was so ripped apart that he was dying on the way there. The fury I feel is nothing compared to the heartbreak my father, my, my dad is experiencing. Happy was absolutely the sweetest and most loving dog and consistent reminder of my mother. The Davy Police stated, this is a civil matter and there is nothing more to be done. They told my dad that if two dogs had been killed, they might have been able to do something about it. Broward County Animal Control gave out some citations to the owners of the dogs. The property owner lives, I won't give that address out, but, which is the street behind my, my dad's property. That's it. That's all there is to be done. Southwest Ranches needs to be aware of the danger that these dogs and have them removed. The county and animal control must have done all they could, which was basically nothing. Now that you've been made aware of these vicious pit bulls, you must act to protect all the residents and their animals. Do you want the legal, the moral and legal responsibility of what will happen to an actual person the next time these killing machines run rampant? This happens on a property which, in forty-five years, has never had any pit bull issues. Nothing can be done to bring back Happy or to erase the feeling of helplessness and fear of seeing a beloved family pet mauled to death in front of your eyes. Next time, it could be your own grandchildren, your grandchild, pet, or friend. Please take action to remove these vicious dogs and safeguard people, animals, and property in this wonderful community. Thank you, Marie Harrison. Then I have it from, a letter here from Mr. Morris that I'd like to read into the record. My name is Jim Morris. I've lived in Rolling Oaks for forty-five wonderful years. I'm ninety-two years old, crippled Korean War veteran. I had my wonderful dog Happy for ten years. He was like the big brother I never had. He placed himself between me and the world. And he never bit any bud, anyone. I couldn't remember him ever growling at anyone, but in two weeks ago, on Monday, March sixth, two pit bulls came into my yard where Happy was tethered for about ten minutes to, to his business, and they ripped out its throat and left him to bleed to die. We were cha- we were charged a four thousand dollar deposit by the lead ER for them to try and save him, but it was too late. Charge was reduced to three thousand dollars. We identified the pit bulls and found out where they were kept. We notified the police and the county animal control. Police said it's now civil matter and washed their hands. The county is talk, is talking about issuing citations. Will they do more? Where the pit bull owner releases them anytime he decides, and he has no regard for the law for our animals, us, our children, elderly, and disabled. The property owner apparently is unaware and he is, that he is responsible for the damage done. They have five pit bulls at, and I won't disclose the address. I think they are raising them for illegal dog fights. After they ki- killed my best friend Happy, they threatened my nurse and scared her half to death. Happy is probably the only unprotected animal, probably, was probably the only unprotected animal in that time. No more animals. What's next? Two of my neighbors have children. Each day, I see people on the street who could be easy victims. Now I can't go out of my yard without a weapon. My nurse can't go out to water her plants unless I go with her. If you think pit bulls are just another type of dog, go to Wikipedia, list of fatal dog tag, dog attacks in the United States. If you have a pit bull or a pit bull mix, pay attention to the number of family pit bulls, attracting families after being part of a family for years, attacking families, excuse me, after being part of a family for years. And Miami-Dade County's smarter than Broward. Pit bulls are illegal in Miami-Dade. It appears that county animal control is recycling pit bulls. It seems to me that a stray pit bull should, should be held for thirty days, would be held for thirty days, to give the owner time to claim them. If unclaimed, they should be put down, not given or sold to an unsuspecting party. And that's all I have to add to the record. I just want to make a personal comment. Um, as a dog owner, I've owned, uh, three Siberian Huskies since I've lived out here over a span of twenty-some-odd years. Siberian Huskies are four degrees, the insurance company told me this, that they are four degrees from a wolf, so we always maintained, our dogs, they, you were in danger of being slobbered on. That's, uh, that was about how vicious they were, but you can never tell with an animal. Um, but they, uh, we kept them under, uh, on leash or in a, a very, uh, fenced-in paddock area that was very secure, uh, at all times. In other words, we were responsible pet owners, and, and we did have, like I say, uh, the, the Huskies that we owned, they are, they are hunters.
Right.
And, uh, we made sure that they did not hunt, and, you know, so that's really what it takes to, uh, to have a dog that can be aggressive, is you have to be very responsible for them. So I just want to make mention of that, you know, as, as we go on. So, and I, and I'll leave it, open up the floor to anybody else that wants to come in, David, if you'd like to speak, or any, anybody else?
Yeah. Any other council comments on that before I open up to the public?
One of the, one of the concerns I had is, um, many years ago, um, it's probably when I was president of the HOA, I was walking, um, my three dogs along Holatie, and, and there was a property at the corner of Holatie and Lou Ray. And in the past, I had seen the two dogs come, uh, jump into the water and swim across the canal. Well, this one particular day, I had passed the property, I was across, uh, Lou Ray, heading north, heading home, and then the dogs, once again, ventured across the canal, attacked my dogs, and had, actually had one of my dogs, uh, little dog Cosmo, had him in his mouth. I had to, I had to pull that dog down, and viciously, and got my dog free, but my dog at the time was a new, um, rescue and had, um, I guess, fear, and it just really escalated his, um, recovery time. Um, he, he was scared about everything for quite a while after then. Then I heard, um, some neighbors who had moved from the area were, um, they were in a baby carriage, they were walking in a baby carriage, and the dogs attacked the baby carriage, but, uh, the child was not hurt. But I heard about that. That was the second incident, and Broward County mandated that they had to put the dogs down after that. So, um, it, it's something that, this was a, a concern to bring up something like this. The initial, um, draft was, um, something I couldn't have voted on. For a good portion, this looks pretty good. We could tweak it a little bit, but it looks pretty good now, and, um, it's just, uh, an experience that I had.
Good. Thank you, David. Any other comments before I open it up? Seeing none, is there any, uh, public comment on this item?
Counsel? Folks, one eight nine oh one, Southwest Sixty-third Street. Walt Butler is my name. Um, I know there's people out here that don't want to see an ordinance of this type, but without rules and without litigation, or without ordinances to enable litigation when you have a problem, we are not civilized. If we don't put something like this in place, it's going to continue. As most of yous know, I lost eight goats to a dog just the other day. I was going across the road to, to Delia's Nursery, who's a good neighbor, a good friend of mine. There was a black dog with a collar. I know where he came from, from a nursery to the south, and I was walking over there to pick up a Kubota, to borrow, to pull some fence posts out, and Danny was kind enough to let me use his machine. As I'm walking down the road to get it, here comes this black dog. I, I know it. It was with one of the German Shepherds that killed one of my goats, so, or drowned one of them, and so he saw me, I saw him. I said, go on, get out of here. He postured, growled at me. I hollered at him again. He turned around and walked to the north. I got that machine. To my surprise, when I get back to my house, here's that dog going to my chickens. I was in the Kubota. I just revved it up, took off after him. He saw me coming. I had the gate open because I was moving the machine in and out. This dog owner has been put on notice at least three times with a telephone call from me saying, you need to get this dog and pick him up. Every time, it's, oh, somebody let him out. He's not supposed to be out. I know he's not supposed to be out, but he is out. And where he was a puppy, he's not a puppy no more, and now that he wants to sit there and threaten somebody walking down the road thinking he owns the place, this is exactly what this ordinance is for. It's for your safety, my safety, and the safety of everyone in our community, so that at least our police are empowered with the ability to put charges where charges need to be placed. If you are a responsible dog owner, pet owner, you got nothing to fear. It's only the people that think that their dogs can roam our public streets and threaten everybody else, those are the dogs that need to be pulled off the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Walt. Any other public comment?
Good evening, all. Pat Keen, I live at sixteen six hundred Southwest Fifty-second Place. So I was looking at the statute that you, as you've got it drafted, and I had a couple issues. I think the idea is great. I think the concept is fine, but when I was looking at it, a couple of things jumped out at me, and maybe it's because I'm anal, but that's where I am. So if you look on page four, line seven, you, you use the words menacing fashion. Okay? And that bothered me a little bit, because who makes that determination? You know, the person who's walking down the street, dog comes up wagging its tail, they happen to have cyanophobia, they're definitely afraid of dogs, they feel... happen to have cyanophobia, they're definitely afraid of dogs, they feel menaced, okay? So it's completely subjective when you use that term in a menacing fashion. So, I mean, just, I'm not arguing that they feel that way, because I'm sure they do, but they feel that way because they have a phobia, not because the dog is vicious or mean. Okay? So I have, I have a problem with using those words menacing fashion. And you almost cover it in the, in the second part of that same paragraph, like in lines eight and nine, okay, of the, it's page four, sorry, eight and nine. And you've got, you know, such actions are tested in a sworn statement by one or more persons. So I assume the one person who makes the complaint signs a sworn statement saying, "Yeah, I felt menaced." And like I said, I'm sure they did. Doesn't mean it's necessarily a dog problem, it could be a person. Okay? But then it says it will be dutifully investigated by the appropriate authority. So my question is, who's the appropriate authority, and what's the qualifications for them to come up there and say, "This is, this is a dangerous dog?" Because if we know who that is, if we know what authority that is, then let's put it in there, rather than saying appropriate authority, because I don't know who that is. You know, so, you know, you're talking about fining somebody a thousand dollars for a dog that may not be mean at all, may be the friendliest dog in the world, but the person who saw the dog feels menaced. So now they're going to get a thousand dollar fine because the person's going to spill out a sworn statement saying, "Yeah, I felt menaced," and then somebody is going to investigate that. But I don't know who that is, or whether they're qualified even to make that determination. So that's, that's the only two comments I have on it. I mean, the rest of it I read looks fine, it's just that one part of it looks, you know, it's so ambiguous and so subjective that you don't know what's going to happen if you're a dog owner. And I think a number of you have been to my house and seen my pit bull mix, he's not exactly a vicious or mean dog. You know, it's like Gary said, you know, he might slobber all over you, but other than that, never bitten, attacked, he's the nicest dog you ever will see. So that's, that's my only comments. So thank you for your time.
Hello?
There you go.
I hope I can tell you about this without breaking out crying. It's hard. The reason why my conversation was about pit bulls is that that's who attacked my dog. But I understood we were talking about a dangerous dog ordinance, which would include maybe German Shepherds and some other dogs, as well as pit bulls. But the problem is, these people who are perpetrating these things are not going to be punished. This fellow whose two pit bulls killed my dog, you could say his attitude is, "So my dog's killed your dog, so what?" The property owner, I plan to punish by suing his pants off. Two people involved here in my case, one is the property owner, and the other is the dog owner. And the property owner is allowing this dog owner to raise these dogs on his property, and the dog owner turns them loose anytime he feels like it. I, all of you have children or grandchildren or neighbors' children, or somebody that could be attacked and killed by these dogs. I want to see these two particular pit bulls put down. That makes sense to me. The part that doesn't make sense is that this damn crazy dog owner can just go out and get two more pit bulls. And I don't know how you could prove it, but I feel strongly that a guy with five pit bulls is raising them for dog fighting, which is against the law. But I don't know if raising fighting dogs is against the law, but we all know that fighting dogs are against the law. I could go for an hour on what a wonderful dog Happy was. He was my shield. You may not know, may not think, but most people these days are buying dogs for guards. I was amazed when I looked somewhere on the internet about how many people are buying dogs for guards, because this day in time, you need a guard. I didn't train Happy to be a guard. I got him as a puppy a little less than a year old, and he made himself my guard. If there was a stranger present, he was between me and the stranger. He never even threatened a stranger other than by his size. He was sixty-five pounds, and generally that was enough size to keep anybody from any foolishness. I don't know that he ever had to do that, but he did. If I was sitting in a chair, he was lying by my side. If I was lying in the bed, he was lying by the side of the bed. If there was a noise in the night, he got up and went to see what it was, came back, sleeping by the bed. I guess I've said more than you want to hear. But what's going to happen eventually? People are going to start shooting dogs in their yards. Now, it might be your precious dog that you've loved all your life, and he slipped out Somebody's going to think he might be a pit bull and kill him. Now, we, I don't have the solution, but I'm damn sure stuck with the problem. How can I go, no way could I get another dog as long as those damn pit bulls are down there and loose. Now, I think the dog should be put down, I think the so-and-so that owns them and has turned them loose, I think he belongs in jail.
Thank you. Yeah, appreciate.
I guess I've said enough.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Appreciate, appreciate you coming out this evening. Any, who was next? Kurt?
Yeah. Kirk Upson-Goss here, 16201 Sterling Road. Mr. Morris, I'm very sorry for your loss, and I feel for you. I know this ordinance has already been passed, but I disagree with the ordinance. I think that it is the property owner to do what, what he or she needs to do to safeguard their dog. For example, with my dogs, I made sure that my fence is there, I put an underbar, I put a hot wire, and I have collars, and whenever, Bandit, which is my big problem dog, because he's afraid of lightning, and now he's afraid of rain, and if you go boo, he's afraid of that also. So he's the one that escapes and, you know, but I'm fortunate that my neighbors see him and call me and put him back in the yard. But it happens maybe about once every three months or so. But he's a good dog. Now, precisely the one that is eighteen years old, she was the problem one, because she has caused me about three or four Publix chickens because of my next-door neighbor, he has chickens. So when I would come home and find one of his chickens in my yard dead, I would go and buy a Publix, you know, cooked chicken, and I'll go over to his house, and I would apologize saying, "Here is your chicken, enjoy it." You know, but, so, I disagree that this ordinance is required. This reminds me of a baseball analogy. When the city got incorporated in two thousand and five, you know, we were like Barry Bonds in nineteen seventy, you know, he looked like a normal person. Now I feel that we are like Barry Bonds in nineteen ninety. We are on steroids, keep trying to go pow, 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 and get people, you know, and I disagreed that that's what we should be doing. So that's just my opinion on this. I disagree that this should, you know, be approved, but it has been, and I would live with it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Thank you, Kurt. Any other public comment on this item?
I'm Louisa Kipple, I live at five two two one Southwest one sixty-second.
Pull down the mic just a little bit. Thank you.
Louisa Kipple, I live at South, five two two one Southwest one sixty-second Avenue. I wasn't aware that the ordinance was passed, I just...
It's not passed yet. We're going to be voting on it tonight.
The only issue that I have with that is that it seems like if somebody comes onto your property in your home, that you could be criminally charged, or, you know, again, if you have a dog and your dog is on your property in your house and somebody's breaking in, this ordinance, if I'm understanding it correctly, says that you can be charged as well? No?
That was originally, I'm sorry to interrupt, but just to correct the point. Originally, when this ordinance came through the first time and was rejected by the council, it had that wording in there that has since been removed.
Okay, so that was my concern, is that if somebody comes onto your property and your dog is protecting your family, that's a whole different issue. I'm very sorry for your loss of your dog. I do agree that there needs to be some type of control with, you know, vicious animals and, you know, I was always under the impression that that was against the law and that you could be sued or charged for an attack, so not sure why, you know, nothing was done at that point, but that was just my comment, so thank you.
Great. Thank you for coming out. Any other public, yes?
Debbie Green, fifty-two oh one Southwest one ninety-nine. So I know I've shared our story before, but just...
Get it on the record.
Get it on record. I know there's been incidents that have started, that I'm aware of since August, like July or August of last year, and the town started working on a dangerous dog ordinance. Since then, as you've heard, I guess even tonight, from other people that I wasn't aware of. But then in September, my husband was walking down two hundred and tenth and walked past a nursery and a pack of vicious dogs just came out, surrounded him and my neighbor, who were just on their Saturday morning six-mile walk, and was viciously attacked, like, if he was a child, I don't even want to think about it, the, what happened to him and his, the bite in his thigh. And then they were walking in the street. So, and these were definitely, they were just whatever, what do you call them, junkyard dogs or whatever? I mean, their purpose is to guard that nursery, that's their alarm system. To Kirk's point, it needs to, it's, there needs to be an ordinance in place to hold the owners responsible, to be responsible owners of their dogs, or whatever. Yeah, these are dangerous dogs, so, yeah, I just think there's, there's a need to have this ordinance, and I was, I was just reading an email that was sent out from one of the HOAs, the meeting where the, I guess it was at the Green Meadows Midtown Meeting, where, that was shared that the Davie Police said they didn't, there was no dangerous dog ordinance that he was aware of, reported in the town of Southwest Ranches. I can tell you for sure, I know ours was reported. They were housing within fifteen minutes of us reporting it. We were told there really wasn't much they could do because the town didn't have a dangerous dog ordinance, although there's state laws and else, there really wasn't much they could do because there wasn't that. So I think for that reason, I feel it's very important that the town pass an ordinance so that, as far as how I understand it, it gives them more ground to move forward, to hold those owners responsible.
Right. Great. Thank you, Debbie. Any additional public comment?
I am Kimberly Laffey, I live in Rolling Oaks, toward the back. I am not opposed to a dangerous dog ordinance. The stories I've heard have been absolutely horrific. I was kind of under the impression that there was already some kind of a law in place that would address this. I do think that if there is a gap on who should be the person to determine, like the gentleman over there had said, that's definitely a must, because I'm, I would hate for someone to be accused of something that isn't the case. And I have seen people that are definitely afraid of dogs, that the dog is standing there wagging its tail. So I think if there was some clarity, that would, that would be very helpful. And I do have my own dog, and like the other people have said, we've taken great pains to keep her inside, and if she did meet you, she would probably kiss you to death. So anyhow, I'm not opposed, but please make it clear so that there's no ambiguity and people feel like it would be fair. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any additional public comment? Seeing none, public comment disclosed. I'd like to make a few comments on this. So the menacing fashion, valid concern. I definitely get where you're coming from there. Fortunately, we have professionals that do, if this were, if this were to be on the books, we have professionals with Davie PD that are well aware of dogs. I mean, Davie is also a rural community, so they are very similar, and they have professionals that can look at this. Is it still a judgment call? It is a judgment call. The reason why that was included is because if there is a threatening dog out there, do we really need to wait till somebody's dog or child is hurt or killed before we take action? I don't think so. I think if we can recognize that this is a dangerous dog ahead of time, and we can cut it off before something worse happens, I think it behooves us to do that. But I do recognize that it is, it is a judgment call. And, but I feel comfortable that we do have professionals that can make that, accurately make that, that call, and will ask the right questions to be able to determine whether or not this is truly a dangerous situation, a menacing situation, or whether it's just someone that is perhaps overreacting. So, but it's a valid point, it's a valid point. I did want to also note that, you know, just like that, that piece where if someone, if someone were to come into your house and your dog is protecting you, you know, the dog has all the rights in that, in that situation. That was, that was, that limitation was, was put in there for... Uh, that was, that was, that limitation was, was put in there for that reason. It's why, it's why we have dogs, right? So, that, it's all about that. The other thing that was pulled out and, and, and David alluded to this was loose dogs. Loose dogs was originally in here, where loose dogs, if a dog was just wandering around, that, that it could be prosecuted under this and the owner could get in trouble. That's been removed. So a loose dog that's just wandering down the road and, you know, looking for the next, the next victim to lick to death, um, is gonna be okay, um, you know? And, and frankly, that happens a lot in the neighborhood. And we'll track down the, you'll track down the owner if we don't already know it and, you know, and it's another way to meet your neighbor and, and it's no harm done and, and, and all is good. And, and we didn't want, we wanted to make sure that we didn't go overboard. We didn't wanna do the Barry Bonds situation. And, um, and so that was removed. We've removed a lot of things here that could be used to go too far the other way. So, um, the question came up in the last council meeting where this was brought up. You know, the fact is, is that there are state statutes that govern this. And so why don't we just stick with the state statutes? And at, at the time, I gave a general answer because I hadn't researched the details, but I knew that there was a need for it because I knew that I had heard several situations where, um, residents or their animals were attacked and basically we were unable to take any action. So I knew there was a loop, there, there was an issue there that needed to be closed, a loophole that needed to be closed. But since that meeting till now, I've done a lot more research on that. And, and I wanted to, I wanted to speak to that. So, um, some of the challenges, if we try and do any sort of prosecution, and, and you've heard tonight that it's, it's virtually impossible to do a prosecution. The reason for that is because a, a J V P D officer or any officer coming out, if you're going to go and use the state statute, they have to witness the attack. Well, how often is that gonna happen? It's not going to happen. They're gonna see the results of the attack, but it'd be very rare that they actually see the tack, they see the attack. If we were to go that far and to be able to press charges, we would have to press charges with the state's attorney. Not our, it's not a local ordinance, so we cannot handle it with the magistrate. We have to go to state court to prosecute it. Our state attorney works on a lot of very large things. It's going to be very difficult for us to get the attention of the state's attorney to prosecute a dog bite. It's probably not gonna happen. Thus, you're seeing the, the issues that, uh, that we see tonight. If it were to happen and it were to go there and the individual were to claim, um, the inability to defend themselves, we would actually be paying for both the prosecution and the defense out of our tax dollars. Does, whereas the magistrate is, is, you know, a very low cost option for both sides. Both sides get to present their case. In most cases, residents, um, go to the magistrate with no legal counsel because it's really not required. And finally, by doing the ordinance here, if you look at the state's ordinance, many of those things that were originally in our ordinance that I said that we pulled out are in the state's ordinance, state's law. That's how we got there in the first place, either the state or the county law. That law does not fit our town because we're frankly more animal friendly than, than you would be if you were in Miami or Fort Lauderdale or, or, you know, an urban area where they wanna be much, much stricter with animals. And so, so actually, our ordinance is much looser and much more lenient, but important, but it's critical and, um, and hits the important things for our town. It's tailored for our town, um, based on the resident feedback that we've heard back. So I feel very comfortable with the ordinance. I feel very comfortable that we need the ordinance, that where we are today without the ordinance, um, is leaving our residents and our residents' animals at risk. And this is a big step, important step, a critical step towards filling that gap. So, thank you. Appreciate it. Any other council comments on?
Yeah, I got, I got, just, uh, just, it's something you noticed. And in the last, just in here alone, there's four dog attacks right in here, in this room. It's all occurred in the last six months.
Yeah.
And then there's two more in Rolling Oaks that I can think of, uh, you know, it's, the number's getting bigger. It's not getting smaller, you know? So we need to, we need, I, we need, I, I really feel we need this ordinance. If it wakes up one dog owner, it's served its purpose, you know? We're not gonna wake up everybody. If it wakes everybody, it wants at least one dog owner up to prevent animals being slaughtered, you know, 'cause dogs are natural hunters. And, you know, this is something we need and I fully support it the way it's written now.
Thank you, Gary. Any other comments?
I got, I got a couple, um, questions. I have about three parts of this. First, um, if a first time offender is brought before the magistrate and the magistrate, and, and the owner is one of the, an owner who is responsible otherwise and his or her, uh, dog had escaped and caused the injury, um, that activates this ordinance. Is, and the owner, uh, admits their wrongful doing, wrongdoing, has made, um, full compensation of damages to the victim and is otherwise conciliatory to their actions. Is there a way that the magistrate at this hearing could find the, um, the owner? And, and considering, taking into consideration that the victim comes to the hearing to testify? I, is there a way that the magistrate could, um, deviate off of the thousand dollars? Or is this locked in?
Richard, I don't know. Are you able to answer that question?
Well, sorry. The, as it reads, it does not give any leeway. It's pretty specific as for the first violation and repeat violations. As far as typically in the, um, code enforcement cases, if the property owner, in this case, the animal owner admits the violation, then we, we do not charge them, you know, the fees associated with the hearing. But, um, other than that, uh, this is pretty clear in that the violation, the magistrate's limited that amount.
All right. Uh, good, 'cause I, I think that if we have a responsible owner who admits their wrongful wrongdoing and is conciliatory, makes compensatory damages to the victim, with vet bills, et cetera, everything that's, would be necessary. And the victim comes up and says, yeah, he, he really did the responsible act. But I think there should be some, um, discretion for the magistrate as to the first assessment only.
Yeah, I, I get what you're going. Uh, I'm wondering, in that situation, um, if the, uh, the victim is happy.
Right.
Couldn't they just decline to press charges?
Well, sorry. Go ahead. If.
I mean, is that?
I can answer, yeah. I mean, well, in this instance, it's not that they're pressing charges. It's now the town.
Right.
They've been cited, they've been issued the notice of violation, so it's the town proceeding forward. So that, that's kinda where we're at, as opposed to in some instances where it's a hundred and fifty dollar fine accruing daily. The magistrate may be able to, you know, bring the fine down in certain situations, but this is clear as it's written, that's what the magistrate's limited to.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, please.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, um, based upon this, um, I, I would like to just make a little tweak on this. On, uh, the blue paragraph on page three, line five, right before where it says the thousand dollars, I would like to insert a maximum penalty of. And that would give the magistrate a little leeway in those situations where the, uh, the victim says, okay, he's done, he, he is conciliatory, he has made good on the response, the financial complications. So, and sure, people are gonna have, are gonna be heartbroken with the loss of an animal. I, I, I feel that way when I lose an animal. But, um, that's, that's one little tweak I would like there, but I feel that a repeat violator should be full extent of the penalties. That was one change that I would, um, I'm gonna ask to amend my motion to include, as long as the other council members seem, um, in agreement.
Okay. Um, you, you made the motion?
I, I wanna first test and see, see where everybody is before I go and make this motion.
David, what was the wording? What was the wording that you want? What was the wording?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't fully hear it.
All right. Uh, line five in the blue paragraph on page three. In between time and one thousand dollars, insert a maximum penalty of. So that would give the magistrate a little, uh, leeway, a little discretion on, um, giving, giving him up to a thousand dollars of.
So why don't you read that first and second line there? Lauren, it's, uh, four and five.
In accordance with section one sixty two point oh nine two D Florida statute, this may be amended from time to time, a maximum penalty of one thousand dollars for the first violation, et cetera, et cetera.
Good, thank you. I'm fine with that.
Okay. Um, second.
Just.
Sorry.
They don't have to do the up to part, maximum.
Right, max, and then that would give the magistrate leeway in order to, based upon the circumstances, to adjust the fine accordingly.
Thank you. Uh, the second issue.
Who, who, who seconded that?
I haven't made the motion yet.
Oh, okay.
I got, I got two other changes.
Oh, okay.
Two other changes. Um, one of them, eh, the next one is on page two in the red paragraph. And this is what we discussed at the last meeting. The owner of a dangerous dog shall provide proof of vaccination to law enforcement. I think that is a little vague. Um, maybe we say to J V police or to town hall.
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement, something like that in there. I think just saying to law enforcement is a little ambiguous 'cause they, the person that is the owner, where am I gonna take my proof of vaccinations? I'm just wondering, where, where, where would they go with it?
Town hall. We have a, a police, uh, J V P D liaison here.
Okay, um, can we?
But I mean, it could go either way between code or that. I, I don't. Code, code would probably be the more.
Okay, can we put that, report it to quote code enforcement? Or you think that's okay there?
I, I have, I have an attorney on this side saying code and I have Andy down there saying code, so.
All right, so we'll go with stereo.
All right, well, that's, okay.
You guys might not be hearing this, but I am.
I'm not, I'm not.
Which is strange for me.
Okay, can we insert, can we replace that to code enforcement?
Okay, and tell me exactly again, where is this? What line?
Uh, that is line thirty two, the last word of line thirty two to, instead of law saying.
Yeah, okay, got it.
And then, uh, finally, in the whereas clauses, I, I looked at it, 'cause the whole context of this, uh, resolution or this proposed ordinance, not resolution, proposed ordinance, is to.
Into the mic, David.
I'm sorry? Oh, all right. The, the whole purpose of this proposed ordinance and if it's, uh, approved, which looks like it's going to be, is to punish the owners of the dogs. Nowhere in a whereas clause is there a reference to the owner. And I was, um, going to suggest on line eighteen of page one of the ordinance, it would read, uh, I'll begin the paragraph. Whereas, as a result of these dangerous dog attacks, the town council believes that it is in the best interest of the health, safety and welfare of its residents to amend the town's code to, um, I guess, impose, uh, some kind of regulation on the owners of the dogs, not necessarily the dogs. So I think the, the owners of.
To regulate dogs and, and their own, and their owners?
I think that would be great.
I, I'm not sure what the legal.
Yeah, I don't know. Richard, are you all right with that?
Yeah, I mean, I, we're regulating, sorry, we're regulating dogs in this matter. And so, uh, I think that encompasses the owners as well as to the penalty provisions.
Okay.
Because the dog's not gonna pay the, the owner of the dog is paying the penalty.
Right.
And that's assumed and explained within the, uh, ordinance.
So what if we changed it, David, to say something like, uh, um, residents to amend the town's code to regulate dogs and promote responsible dog ownership?
Perfect. Perfect. Promote responsible dog ownership. All right, um, so I would like to make a motion to include those three suggestions.
Amend your motion?
My motion to that.
Okay, so David has proposed to amend his motion with those three adjustments. Who said, I think, Gary, you seconded this?
No, I didn't.
Who seconded it?
Bob did, Love or Kim.
Who, who seconded the motion?
The original motion.
Yeah, the original motion. You're okay with the, the adjustments? Okay, so we've amended the motion in those three areas.
I'm good.
Okay.
All right, let's, let's, let's be clear.
Yes.
Let's go over those three, those three items again.
Okay.
Starting with page one, just so, just for the record, for the public, so everybody knows.
Right. So, on, uh, the first page, we're talking about the whereas clause that ends on line eighteen and it talks about, uh, the town's code to regulate dogs and to promote responsible dog ownership.
Okay.
On the next page, um, down at what, line thirty two, we're substituting law enforcement with code.
Enforcement.
Enforcement. And then on the next page, on line five, we are saying time to time to a maximum of one thousand dollars.
For the first violation.
For first violation.
Now, let me ask you a question. Do we wanna, do we wanna address on page two, line eight, with the, line eight and nine with the appropriate authority? Or do we wanna just leave that alone?
I was gonna bring that up as well, Gary.
Richard, I'm kinda asking you that question.
Sure, um. I was gonna bring that up also.
Yeah. Beat you.
It's fine. It's my understanding that may have been discussed previously, um, no? Okay. I mean, in this case, it can actually be investigated by both J V P D and code enforcement. We're not, because depending on the matter.
Yeah, I almost think it's better to leave it a little bit more general.
That would be my suggestion because we don't wanna just put it all on J V P D. We don't wanna put it all on code enforcement because some different entities could, or different agencies, different members can, um, investigate each incident independently.
Right.
Okay, so we don't, we don't wanna touch it.
How about appropriate law enforcement authority?
Well, then it's limited, I mean.
Then you're taking it out of code.
Then you're taking out code, not necessarily.
Technically, law enforcement.
Well, not necessarily. I, I think the best way is appropriate authority and then that's limiting to either, I mean, because you can also have, um, the state of Florida may be investigating it too.
Right.
Um, in their particular agencies, um, so. Sorry.
Florida Wildlife.
Yeah, it, it could be a number of different authorities and this just opens, this just allows each independent agency to do their investigation. And when it comes before the magistrate, those can all be presented before the magistrate.
Very good. All right. Any other additions, corrections, adjustments?
Oh, I, I like Pat's point on menacing fashion as well. I mean, I've been a dog owner and trainer all my life and no dog scares me because I've been around them. I've felt, dealt with, you know, nasty ones and nice ones. So, um, do we have a better phrase? Is it more in a vicious? There, there are no menacing dogs to me. I mean, you just gotta learn how to pet them, that's all.
Intimidating?
Intimidating?
I don't.
I just, when I, if I compare myself against the, the first person in the first aisle, who's got, who's terrified of dogs, where do we go in the middle? I mean, for that person, any dog could be terrifying because they've had a bad experience. With me, no dog is terrifying. So what's something in between here?
What line, what line are you on here? What page and what line?
Uh, look for menacing fashion, Gary.
Page two.
Line seven.
Okay.
Page two, where?
Line seven.
It's on line seven, okay, I got it, menacing fashion. So you wanna change the menacing fashion to?
Yeah, something that shows that they're being aggressive, that they're being, uh, vicious.
What would you change it?
I, I'm looking for words.
I think at the end of the day, it's going to come down, whatever word we pick there, we're, we're threading a needle. And it's going to come down to the. And it's going to come down to the appropriate law enforcement agency doing the appropriate work to investigate it. And that word menacing means that in some situations, we may pick up some situations where the dog truly is not menacing, but to your point, you know, someone who's not comfortable with dogs took it that way. And that's what the investigation is meant to determine by, you know, law enforcement. I don't know that we can find a word that is going to define that. I mean, that's just.
Okay.
I get the concern. I totally get the concern.
Well, using the word dangerous or aggressive is the same as menacing.
It's, yeah, that's my point. It's, you know. It, all right, all right, it's not, it's not, it's not an open discussion.
It's not semantic, it's just semantics at that point?
Yeah, any one of those words are valid. Any one of those words, none of those words are wrong. But every one of those words is not going to define and make it simple for someone to say, oh, that's, you know, that's. Any one of these is going to take an investigation to determine what really went on there. That's my perspective.
I just don't like ambiguity because it ends up in court. But I can argue with the point you made, Steve. Thank you. So no more of word changes? What's anybody else?
I'm not, I'm not looking, I know there was a lot of feedback from the residents, you know. I don't think there's a word out there that's going to say, oh, okay, this dog, you know, crossed the line, that dog did not. What it's trying to say is that, to that individual, it was menacing. And we need to have the proper authorities, and I think we do. We have the experts who have experience in this area to do the right investigation to make that call.
Yeah, I just want, just on the, I want to piggyback on that note. We have a, in our code department, one of the employees is trained on animal behavior. And in the Davie Police Department out here, we have an animal behavioral specialist. They've gone to classes, they've gone through different levels to learn that because we know, they know we are so animal centric out here that they've gone through. Whether it's the large animals, like the horses, or a goat, or a dog, you know.
Right.
So we do have those people that can make that call on staff.
We really do, we really do. And I think, as I said before, we're fortunate.
I think everybody just forgot that.
Yeah, yeah. I think we're fortunate that we, you know, we're partnering with Davie PD on this because they.
And then we also have volunteer fire department, which does large animal rescue.
Right.
That's a specialty of theirs.
Right.
You know, that sort of thing. So I think we've got a lot of bases covered here that people don't realize the town has for resources.
Right.
Yeah, just to clarify one thing with the county, I read the county's ordinance on basically dangerous dogs and animal control. I don't know, a lot of people were saying at prior meetings that we really should just adopt the county code. That still has the same enforcement issue as if it's a state law. But there's a whole nother side of it as well. We just blanketly, you know, started enforcing the county's laws. You can't take your dog off a piece of property without it being on a leash. That's the county law, they call it at large. It's against the law to have a dog out large. So in other words, when you step off, if the dog follows you, you're basically breaking county law. So I looked at that thinking, oh, maybe there are things we can specifically adopt. I think our language is better than theirs. So I'm happy with what you guys have done, what the attorneys have done, working with the council. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, good. Any other? Yeah, any other comments?
Oh, wait. Did you actually make the motion now? Everything's done, right?
Yeah, we made the motion in the second with the three amendments. Three, we have three amendments. Okay, let's call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great, thank you all for coming out this evening, appreciate it.
Sorry about your dog.
Yeah, sorry, sir.
Item number nine, the resolution.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida. Establishing a policy and procedure for all future transportation surface drainage and ongoing rehabilitation tis door projects to prescribe standards and criteria for eligible projects and for the procedures to be used for public notice. Authorizing the town administrator to implement the transportation surface drainage, ongoing rehabilitation, tis door policy, and providing an effective date.
Great, do I have motion on this item?
Motion approved.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may jump in?
Yeah.
The purpose of this item is to formalize council's acceptance of the tis door swell standards and programs and tie it to the tertiary drainage plan that was adopted back in 2004. The item that was in your agenda book had some minor, I'll say administrative tweaks to it, some additional content to it. But that is, other than what was underlined, now it came to you today, that was what has been approved by the Drainage Board and Town Public Works Director is on board with that as well.
Great. And I know that the Drainage Board spent a lot of time on this as well, going through it. And I appreciate their work also. All right, public comment on this item?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. It's been 14 months since I first started playing with this. It's been before the council three times. It's been before the Drainage Board twice. And the last time was the other night. And other discussions with Andy as to some changes. Number one and three are fine, there's no problems there. Number two, there's one sentence that needs to be added. And that was agreed that this should be the sentence, or something very similar to it. Add a sentence that, quote, "All safety and health determinations by the town engineer and the engineer of record will be brought before the Drainage and Infrastructure Board and explained." That is because at this moment, Drainage and Infrastructure Board has no say, thought, or consideration of number three. And then number four, which the Drainage and Infrastructure Board approved one thing, and the town liaison to the Infrastructure Board wrote something else. And Steve, you were present when he said it at the meeting the other night. A and B are now in part of this master tertiary drainage plan. And I agree with that. But it needs to be re-interated into our program tonight that you were passing. The town master tertiary plan has delineated in Exhibit A of Resolution 2005-008, which is included as reference. There's two other things that have to be done that are not in the tertiary drainage plan of 2004. But was, what was published in the town newsletter in February of 2022. One is a wide and relatively flat profile. That is in that document there. The Drainage Board both times approved that and sent it forth to the council. Now C was approved both times by the Drainage Board. But what was suggested to them was six inches and no greater than 12 inches. With input from the town engineer, they agreed that 12 inches should be the depth. From what I understand now, that is not being brought forward to you because the town engineer now states that 12 inches is the minimum depth going down to the center of the earth. I disagree with him. What the Drainage and Infrastructure Board approved is exactly what number C says. The center line of the roadside swale shall never be more than 12 inches below the pavement edge. That is what Drainage and Infrastructure Board has sent to you, but that is not what is written there. Because the town Drainage and Infrastructure Staff Liaison decided to change it without input from the Drainage and Infrastructure Board. So I ask that you make these changes just the way they are because those are what were approved by Drainage and Infrastructure Board. Thank you.
Thanks, Noel.
Hi, Chris Brenlow, 5301, Third Red Lane. I'm here to support Noel, but in a different fashion. I think perhaps if we had a solid delineation on our roles as secretaries and/or chairs or liaisons, and it was Fluid 3each Board, that might help. Why do I say that? I've been a secretary, I still am a secretary for a board, I take copious notes. I think any discussion items that we have from the onset of the meeting till the end are important. So I did that when I was doing it for Parks, and I continue to do it for Ed Board. I work with two liaisons, and I know that they take notes, which they then forward on to Andy so that he has his report, and then it gives it a side by side. So I think maybe if we have something that's unilateral across the board, it might keep from there being any concerns or any ambiguities or any questions as to what was said, what was written, what wasn't written, and we have backup. So I wanted to offer my support in that manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any further public discussion on this item? Seeing none?
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may?
Yeah.
I worked with Mr. Hollingsworth on this multiple times this week, and neglected to maybe share a copy with him. So I want to let him know and certainly point out for the record that the copy I furnished all of you during the day today, and hard copy on the meeting, has the comments that he had spoke to today. So you have been furnished with that, with the one exception about the center line, which I believe is consistent with the tertiary drainage plan as was adopted. So I just want to share with him, if I neglected to give you that copy, Noel, I apologize. But I did incorporate that and share those other comments with the council.
Andy, just a quick question on your comments. You're addressing line C, which says the center line of the road swell should never be more than 12 inches. You said that's already adopted?
You know what, Rod, can you please come up and just kind of? Yeah, yeah, kind of talk about the difference between the two wordings.
Yeah, it'd be my pleasure, Mayor, Council. So one basically states that the 12 inch is a maximum. And in our tertiary drainage map and the exhibits that we use, it's actually stated in there that it's a minimum of 12 inches to center line of the swell from the edge of pavement. That's what's been adopted. So it's just to be consistent with our detail that's already there.
Okay, so you're saying that the center line in the swell, or the swell, will be a minimum of 12 inches below what?
The edge of pavement.
The edge of pavement?
Yeah, that's what's in our detail.
Okay, okay.
And if I?
And from an engineering standpoint, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, yeah, we hashed this out at Drainage, right? So essentially, what we try to do is word the language as flexibly as possible to allow for any deviations that are there on site. So I don't feel that it's necessary to do a 12 inch swell everywhere, right? So we've had issues where, on 188th specifically, where we accommodated and we worked with our residents to do something that was less intrusive because the topography essentially, it provided for that ability to do that because it was falling away from the roadway itself already. So the policies, I think, are great. I think it's a good thing to do in case you have a different individual standing up here in front of you that maybe has different views, different ways of doing things, different opinions and of how they want to go ahead about designing, you know, technical standards and adopting them. So I think it's a good protective measure to have, but I present every single project in front of the Drainage Board, every single one since I've been here. So, and this is not just relegated to tis door, this is every single project that we do is a capital project. So to me, it's a little bit over the top that we have it. But, you know, I think 12 inches is too much, to answer your question directly. I mean, at times.
Yes, I got you, I got you. So you're saying that in some cases, we may not want to drop the full 12 inches from the edge of pavement?
That's correct.
So the wording in there is confusing to me because the wording, if it's, the wording is a minimum of 12 inches, sounds to me like it's got to be 12 or more inches.
Yeah.
The dropdown.
Yeah.
Then that disagrees with what you just said.
No, it does.
That's where I'm confused.
I, okay, so I didn't think the policy, me personally, is necessary because we're going as we go through every project and we're looking at it individually. So to word it as flexibly as possible, you say, as, you know, I had original language in there, I can't remember exactly what it is, where we say, as reasonably possible to follow the standard, right? So I don't have a problem making it, me personally, I don't have a problem making it shallower, I don't see a problem at all. The thing is going between what's an accepted standard and not, right? So if you're saying tis door is going to be always something, right? This is why I have a problem with any language. It's not any, you know, just not one or the other. It's, you're tying yourself to that, and then you're essentially referencing an exhibit that's been adopted by council that states something differently. So it's either we're consistent, and then my way of essentially addressing it is go in front of DAB, go in front of council when the project comes up, and then say, hey, we recommend something different. Do you guys agree? And we'll go from there. But the actual wording, and I don't feel it's necessary at all, but that's just me.
Got you. So I'm going to restate that just to make sure I understand it. So what you're saying is that the standard will be a minimum of 12 inches, but you're stating that there's latitude that the engineer can take in those, in certain situations where that 12 inches is not required, and they can adjust from that standard?
That's how I wrote it. That's how I would like to proceed if anybody wants an actual specific, you know, document in there or policy in there. So, and that's essentially what our board approved. So I know there was references to, our board approved XYZ, and I went in my office and I changed it completely. That was not the case. Okay, so, yeah, I think if you want to approve a standard, then we approve it as consistent with what we already have adopted. And then we bring that in front of DAB, in front of council, and if there's a deviation that makes sense, we present that, and they accept it, and you guys accept it, and go from there.
Okay, thank you, Rod, appreciate it.
I got a question.
Yeah.
In the town, do you see a swell that be 12 inches or deeper?
Have I seen one?
No, no, do you see it reasonably as a certain area where a 12 inch swell or deeper, minimum 12 inches, would be necessary?
Okay, so this, I do see in certain situations where it would be prudent to have a 12 inch swell, yes.
Can you give me an example, please?
An example would be anywhere where you're doing a drainage project, and you really have some flooding issues and staging issues, and you want to be able to essentially have water discharge into a system and leave that property as quickly as possible. Then in any situation like that, it would be prudent for us to have swells that are 12 inches instead of six.
Is the swell? Is the swell for drainage or is it to allow the permeation of the water slowly back into the aquifer?
The primary focus of the soils is for conveyance, but in time, it can serve as retention and it can serve as percolation, too.
All right, thanks. My question is this, at twelve inches, I saw a lot of the 199th, 201 areas and I thought that maybe some of that was dug a little too deep when, especially in front of Debbie's house, problems Mike is having with mowing, things like that. I think that maybe it was a little too deep at that time and, you know, I wasn't supervising it, but that's a concern of mine.
I think some of those, well, I know in some areas, they put down more sod because that was a true issue. I'm not saying that all of them are, you know, the way they should be. I think what we're doing here is we're setting up the standard of twelve inches because that's what we've historically had for the last 20 years or 18 years. And it generally has worked and I say that knowing that in certain situations, it hasn't worked. And I think, I think the engineering has learned from that and is going to be adjusting going forward. I do think it's critical that we give engineering the latitude to adjust based on the situ- we're not Weston, you know, where it was all leveled out and everybody's, you know, has the same, you know? I mean, we have the most unique property in all of Broward County and I'll stand by that. So we need some flexibility for the engineer to do the right thing in those situations.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
My concern is that where it says twelve inches minimum, on Holty Trail, I don't see a place where twelve inches would even be implemented at all.
And that's, and that's why we would give the engineer the latitude to make the-
Latitude point, yes.
So let me get this straight, he's got the latitude to go less?
Yes.
Okay. Just a couple, a couple of observations just want to make. One is the Drainage and Infrastructure Board is an advisory board, is not an approval board.
Right.
So just let's get that out in the open right away, okay? And our liaison to that board is the town engineer.
Yeah.
Who is really the person that has to decide what happened and has more knowledge than anybody else in this room combined, all of us combined. I just like to make those two points very clear.
You know, and yeah, I'd like to make one other point. Those are great, absolutely, absolutely. One other point that Rod made in the Drainage Board that he did not make this evening, but I think it's, it was, it's an interesting point to make, is nothing would make Rod's life easier than if we just said, it's twelve inches all the time, right? It gets him out of the loop, right? You know, he's got no, no, no decision, it's not his fault, that's what it is, it's twelve inches, doesn't matter where it is. You know, by giving this flexibility, we can do the right thing, but it kind of puts him in a little bit of a buzzsaw because now he's making a judgment call in some of those situations. So I admire the fact that he's willing to take that on and kind of put himself in the middle to do what's right and best for our community. Is he going to get it 100% right, 100% of the time? No, he's not because last time I checked, he was a human and we have a bad habit of making some mistakes here. But he, you know, he does a good job of adjusting afterwards if it needs to as well, so.
And we also correct those mistakes.
We do. We do. We do our very best to correct the mistakes. Yeah.
Yeah, I would be for removing line C here because I don't want to tie the engineer's hands really on anything where discretion is necessary.
Right, right. Yeah. All right. So let's see, what is, our motion is, so just to be clear, I'm going to go through this. This is an adjustment that was made based on discussions between Noel and Andy on item number, line, well, item number two, an additional sentence was added that the DAB in capitals, Drainage Infrastructure Board will be informed of any life safety changes. Item six was added, all swells with tis, within a tis door project shall follow, and then there were a couple of points under that. A, the town's master tertiary drainage plan as delineated in exhibit A of Resolution 2005-008, which is included as reference, have a wide, relatively flat profile. And then C is removed.
Is that in the motion?
That's what I'm looking for.
No, is that in the motion?
No, it's not right now. I don't think it is. I think we're working off of-
On this exhibit A, that we were just, that we were handing out before the meeting, paragraph two, that the line that Noel had requested to be inserted, Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Board will be informed on any life safety changes. Does that speak, life and/or safety changes or, because life safety doesn't make grammatical sense to me. And a comma, I don't think there would be appropriate.
I think it's a term, I think it's a regular term that's used in engineering.
I'm not an engineer, okay?
I mean, correct me Rod if I'm, okay.
All right, thank you. And then the other question I had is on paragraph five with Bahia sod and I support the town using, having the standard being Bahia sod, but my question is if, for example, when they redid Holty Trail, Tracy Moyer said he didn't want Bahia sod and he said no to it and he actually went ahead and put his, put his own sod in there. Will it, this being in this ordinance somehow restrict a property owner from going in and putting in their own sod?
Good question. That certainly isn't my impression. And I see Rod shaking his head, no. This is just saying if we, if we are going to put in sod, it's going to be Bahia.
This is the town's-
And we've gone around that, you know, we've gone around that maypole a number of times.
Yes, we have.
So we've tried different things and-
Yeah, it's had owner discretion.
Yeah, to either, either go with the Bahia sod or to do it themselves.
Yeah, do it themselves.
Yeah.
There's a downside about do it yourself. Most of those properties still don't have anything out front.
Yeah, and-
It's their choice.
All right.
So do we have-
So do we, yeah.
Motions get amended yet or no?
Yeah, I'm going to clear about that, too. The motion that's on the table, does it include the amended wording that Andy provided to council tonight? I didn't think so. So we need to, we need to amend the motion to this wording that was handed out to us this evening. Who made, who made the motion on this?
Somebody down there.
I seconded it.
Bob, do you, do you-
I would accept the changes as revised in the most current version of exhibit A.
Okay.
And I'll concur as a second.
Perfect, thank you. All right. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, if you please call the roll.
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Sorry. Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bry Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
We do have some tongue twisters here on, and I say that because I've got one of them. I never thought of that. Okay, all right, item number 10.
Is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing CPZ Inc., Architects Inc. to utilize the services of Osborne Engineering Company as an approved subconsultant as outlined in its response to request for qualifications 22-013 for continuing architect and/or engineer consulting services and providing an effective date.
Great.
Motion to approve?
Thank you.
Second.
Great. Awesome. Andy, you have, I know we've got a representative here.
Well, actually, Heidi's here for more for the next issue.
Oh, okay.
This does tie to that. A few meetings ago, we approved as council, you approved a whole lot of different consulting firms, surveyors, engineers, et cetera, for continuing services contracts. This is adding one more to that list. It's one that works very closely with CPZ, which is the next item on the agenda, but this is getting them, making sure they meet our qualifications to work with us and approving them to place them on that list.
Great, thank you. Is there any council comment on this item? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, if you please call the roll.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bry Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item number 11, please.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a purchase order with CPZ Architects Incorporated in the amount of $241,707.47 for architectural services for the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funded Southwest Meadows Sanctuary Park restroom facilities project, authorizing the town administrator to accept, to execute the purchase order and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second?
Yeah, Mayor.
Yeah, Andy?
This is actually a very exciting item for all of us, as you know, and it was in the resolution Deborah read. This is ARPA-funded, this is federal money, that the council has seen fit to appropriate towards the construction of restrooms and some other facilities over at the Southwest Meadows Preserve. CPZ Architects is going to take the lead on this and Heidi Rodriguez is here with us tonight. She's very familiar with the project and can certainly speak to the scope of what this entails and addressing questions that the council may have. But we're very excited to move this forward. Thank you.
Great, awesome. Thank you, Andy. Welcome, Heidi. Appreciate you coming and enjoying our full slate of items before we got to your item. Maybe, you're welcome, maybe you can just come up just for a second and just kind of give a little bit of background on, you know, the experience of the firm on these types of projects.
Thank you for the introduction. As Andy said, my name is Heidi Rodriguez. I am with CPZ Architects. I am a licensed architect and today I am filling in for the president, Chris Zimmerman. It is a very exciting project. As he said, it does entail multi-purpose site improvements. It includes a stabilized grass area, site lighting, perimeter fencing, and a restroom building with large canopies that are intended, excuse me, to cover picnic tables. I don't have anything to show here today, but there was a sketch that was attached to the proposal.
Okay, great, thank you. Be careful with the lighting. We're very careful about our lighting in the ranches, but I know that's all going to be reviewed, so it's good. Any questions from the council?
Yeah, I have.
Yeah, go ahead.
Will, will we be able to see the rent, the plan rendering before it's finalized?
Absolutely. Right now, we're just in the proposal phase, hoping that it gets approved. At that point, we would put together a site plan for everybody's review that is part of our scope.
Okay. The reason I'm saying that is I'm thinking of the Equestrian Park and the pavilion and I know we're putting a patio on the side of the restrooms similar to that. And what's really nice about the Equestrian Park is, is the size of it.
Right.
And we're only talking roof structure and concrete at that point. It's not air-conditioned or anything.
Yeah, yeah.
And I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want something to be narrow that, when we could go another 10 feet out, you know, or something to that effect, you know? I think that's, I think that's, that's going to get used a lot.
Right.
As we develop that site, you know? So I think we want to be prepared for that down the road. That's all, that's just a comment.
Yeah, no, makes sense, great point. Any other council questions, comments? Yeah, Bob?
Yeah, Andy and I spoke about this briefly the other day when we had our meeting. I looked at the plans and they looked fine. The only concern I have is the fencing that runs along Dykes Road is probably the original hog fencing. It's probably 30, 40 years old and the gates are falling down. It seems like we may want to, you know, secure the park by putting up a reasonable fence, five-foot fence and a pair of gates. And even if we decide not to replace the fence, let's replace those gates because we're having a lot of damage in our parks now due to ATCs and as long as we invite it, it's going to happen, so.
I thought that was part of this project.
I didn't see it anywhere on there and I talked to Andy and he said we can take care of it, but I don't know if it'd be part of the project or just another $10,000 for fencing and gates.
You had mentioned fencing was part of it. How, do you know what fencing was included?
So we were told that there is some, what, perimeter fencing? And so we've allocated perimeter fencing on the, well, assuming north is up, on the northeast side of the property. The rest is to remain unless you guys wanted us to replace it. We are, however, adding a new gate and this is 163rd Avenue.
Right, existing cattle gate.
On the west side, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's a great point, Bob. We might want to take a look at that and see.
Yeah, I would, I would, if we're going to do this, I'd like to see us do it correctly and put fencing along Dykes Road.
Yeah.
You know, where we can and possibly on the west side.
Right.
You know?
Good.
Yeah, David?
I think that any structure that's built, as Gary had indicated, this is going to be used a lot, that it would not be constructed in a way that would prohibit additional construction that we may be finding necessary in the future. This is going to be a growing project. It's going to be, it's going to be, it may be the biggest project of the town, aside for Town Hall.
Right.
Mayor, I have one question. I heard that you mentioned a gate on 163rd?
That's correct.
There's already one there, but it's not functional.
So would that be one of the primary interests of whatever going into, I know the residents would not be happy if they come off of, instead of using Griffin or so to exit at, you know, onto 163rd, the residents would not be happy. On Dykes Road, it's different, I'm sure, but to exit onto 163rd after the carnival, any of that would be, would be real tough for the residents on 163rd.
Just to make a, sorry.
Go ahead.
Just to make a clarification here, the main entrance would be off of Griffin Road. The scope currently is just for replacement of that existing gate off of 163.
Okay.
I think that's an emergency entrance and exit.
Yeah, that's down towards the sanctuary, that's down by the house and stuff, exactly. Okay.
Yeah. It's not intended to be.
Okay.
We want to protect those, I think we're all united, we want to protect those residents from that traffic.
Right, thank you.
Awesome, I think we're good. Thank you, Heidi, for coming out.
Thank you, thank you for having me. Nice meeting, everybody.
Absolutely. Is there any resident comments on this item?
Kirk Hopsen Garcia, 16201 Sterling Road. I am happy to see this project before us. It is a needed project, but when I read through it and I saw the size of the engineering fees and I saw that it was, you know, it was for the architectural services for restroom facilities, I then thought that, wow, this is pretty expensive to just say restroom facility. But then I called and I got that it also included a water main and other site improvements and stuff. So if I had the same problem, I'm also wondering if other residents also had the same problems. So I would ask that better wording be picked to give a more complete description in your resolution so I could have stayed home tonight.
Thank you, Kirk.
Okay.
Good suggestion.
Good evening, I'm Ellie Keane, I live at 16600 Southwest 52nd Place. Where in that vast lot are we thinking of putting this property, this building? In reference, I mean, so?
This is basically in the same area where the Farmer's Market is.
I know that. That's a pretty big area that Farmer's Market is taking on. That's a big lot. Are we talking about like where the porta potties is, is where you're planning to put it? That's, I'm just trying to visualize kind of where, I have not seen a site plan map.
It's the southeast, it's the, it's the eastern corner, southeastern corner.
Yeah, yeah.
Of the preserve that's in-
Close to where that private property is there, right?
Right, in the park area.
Yeah, in the park area next to that home that's, that's in there.
Mayor, Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
We're still final, because some, one of the things that we're doing now is wetlands determination of where those things are. So the exact location may be fluid, but I will say it will be at the east edge of those- of, of those five acres. How far north and south might, might veer a little bit, depending on what mitigation, et cetera, that we run into.
Great, thank you.
I just want to be clear. But it would be in the east and west.
And how would that affect the residents in that area?
There are none.
Yeah.
There are none there?
Nope.
It's right in the middle of the park.
It's, it's not, yeah, it's not in, in the preserve, the farmer's market area. It's not in the preserve, that's, that's town-owned. It's gotta be in the park, which is right at that boundary.
Right.
Okay, so it's like to the left of the farmer's market if you're entering the farmer's market?
You're entering the farmer's, to the left, it'll be in the southeast corner area. The exact location has not been determined as we've found out.
So it's kind of closer to Dykes in a set, no?
No, no, it's almost like right smack in the middle.
It's in the middle of the park.
Of the whole enchilada.
Okay.
East-west.
And we're gonna be running, we're gonna be running electricity, drilling, well, well drilling, the facilities for picnic tables, things of that nature. And, and, and the men's room and women's room, and probably a utility, utility storage area.
And with the idea that we'll start using this as a park?
I'm sorry?
We'll start using this as a park?
It'll be an aid to both the preserve and the park area.
Okay, thank you.
The park area's got a lot more development that has to be done to it.
But it's, they, there'll be gra, there'll be fields that kids could go out and run and-
It's phase one and probably 40 different phases.
There's an area where they can run and fly their kite, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Eventually.
So, I'm on the parks board. So what I understand, where the, the restrooms are going, it's not actually, as you just, Councilman Jablonski just stated, it's not actually in the preserve, it's actually in the-
Park.
The park. In the, now all of a sudden it went out on my head, but the, the actual, the sanctuary. It's actually in the sanctuary. And when the town was, got the grant to put, to get that land that is now known as the sanctuary, there's also the commitments that go along with it. So, what I understand from our town liaison, that it's by strategically putting these restrooms, which kind of sit side by side with where the farmer's market and where other events of the town, the carnival and all, it will also help to satisfy those grant commitments that we haven't been able to do anything up until this point.
Right.
Absolutely.
Since we may have some influence on a site plan now, since it's not drawn up, Andy, I think you want to probably have the open spaces with the tables and all easily visible from Griffin and Dykes. Not, so they're not hidden by the building. If, if you put the wall sides of the building towards Dykes and Griffin, you wouldn't be able to see anything going on in there. And I know we've had issues at our parks. So, yeah, let's, let's orient the building so that it, it's easily observable from the main roads. Thank you.
Yeah, David?
And this question is for December, because you're the specialist in, in my question. In that area, are there any native Floridian trees or growth that should be attempted to preserve while this construction is going on, so they don't knock down native vegetation?
We did.
Good evening, council. And Councilmember Kuzinski, good question, thanks for asking. In the area that we will likely do any kind of construction, there's no trees at all. There are some remnant Red Bay trees that are still surviving on the site that I'd love to see, you know, live as long as they can, and, and those are far away. And to answer the Vice Mayor's question about the 163rd Avenue gate, since I'm, I have you all captive now, I just want to let you know, Councilmember, that the gate over there is always, it's always been planned, and that part is going to be, it's gonna involve neighborhood park elements that you guys need access to. So there will be multiple access, but not a driveway gate per se. We'll never route traffic that way.
Good. Another quick question for December. Are you getting the right toilets?
Oh, God, yes. Yes, yes, absolutely.
You got final approval?
We'll never make that mistake again.
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you, December. All right.
It'll end up happening sooner or later.
I think we're good? Yeah, I think we're good. If we can please call the roll, Deborah.
Council, Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Sure, why not?
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, item number 12, please.
Item number 12 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing the issuance of a purchase order to E. Gomez Construction in an amount not to exceed $42,975.00 for the Country Estates Fishing Hole Park Playfield Fence Project and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, this is, this item is to fence off the ball field out at Country Estates Park, because as, as Councilmember Hartman alleged before, said before, we have issues with ATCs and other things. We want to secure that ball, ball field to protect it. And I'm very pleased to let you know this came in well under budget.
Awesome.
We look forward to getting this done. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Andy. Is there any council comment on this item?
No.
Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item?
Noel Holly's worth 199th Avenue. I was looking at it, and, well, it's, you're voting on $42,975. You go three pages in, and on the backside of one of the pages, there's $60-some thousand dollars for the cost of this project. So what's the difference, and where's the other $20-some thousand dollars coming from? I asked our financial guru before the meeting, and I didn't get a good answer, so let's the council now ask this question. Where's this other $20,000, or is this a phantom $20,000? Or, or why is those pages even in there if we're only gonna spend $42,000?
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Neil. December, can I call you back up one more time?
Thank you, Newell, that's a great question. I had the same question once I had the, received this proposal. And what happened in this bid is I requested pricing for galvanized, plain old silver galvanized fencing as well as black vinyl coated fencing, knowing I was probably gonna go for the vinyl one if we could afford it, but it's usually a little bit more costly. And the contractor added both of those costs, even though we only select one. So the proposal for the vinyl, black vinyl coated fencing is $38,475. And because the site is kind of rocky, he added a little extra on there because of the digging conditions of $4,500. So those two prices added together equal the $42,975. And the $25,976 is not going to be done. So when you look-
That's for the other fencing proposal.
Right, that was the other, the other option.
Right.
He just didn't make it quite clear in his proposal.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you, December.
December, do you have a map in terms of where you intend on installing the fence? Because I didn't see anything in here.
No, I haven't done, well, I did for them. It's just an aerial with a box drawn on it. There will be four openings, so an opening on either, on all four sides. The side that faces east, south, and west will be pedestrian-sized, and the, the side that faces the driveway area will be wider for maintenance equipment to get in and out. And those will be placed, you know, close to wherever the trails are. And it'll just be on the out, it'll, it'll go out to the outer perimeter of the improved area, where the new fill was spread and the new seed was, was placed last.
The gates for maintenance, they'll remain locked?
Yes, yes.
To keep the ATCs out and the four-wheel vehicles out?
Yeah, that makes sense.